Well, good evening. Let's go ahead and start. We're a couple of minutes behind schedule. If y'all will join us in a moment of silence, start our meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you. Kirk doesn't have a student, so if you'll join us for the pledge, I'll lead this one. Pledge to allegiance. And salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God. With liberty and justice for all. Well, Kirk?
I'm sorry, I did have a student that was supposed to come tonight.
That's alright.
He's okay. He's one of our seniors. And so he's very responsible, we don't matter. I hope everything's okay. Once again, I have an opportunity to, I guess, address everybody here tonight and then, and talk about some of the great things that are going on at West Oak. And so what I want to do is I want to start with this picture, because things are about to change. And so if you look at the school here, this is what it looked like last year at this time. And, and we, we strongly believe that at West Oak, it's always the strength of the warriors and the tribe. So collectively, we're much stronger than we are individually. But, we have kind of a new day. And this is a picture looking out over our baseball field early in the morning as the sun comes up. And it's, a lot is changing this year. Everything from our, um, schedule, going to the block schedule, to, uh, starting later and getting out later. Um, and so there's a big change for teachers and for students. And then the construction that's going on. Um, has created, you know, I'd love to be able to say it's created a ton of turmoil for us. But that's not the case at all. It's actually been very smooth. Uh, but it has created some, some disruption and some changes. But I wanted to walk you through, because I was hoping to give you just kind of an idea of what our facilities are going to look like. And so you see some of these pictures, and, and we're going to walk around the school. So here we are, in the back in our ag area, and you can see our new greenhouse, and then our new ag shop area, there. We're very excited about this. Uh, that is a picture of inside our ag shop. Uh, you can see there's six welding stations. Um, we've got tabletops there for students to work on, on different small engine repair and, and, you know, ag mech. Got a great table saw there, we're real excited. That's one of those stop saws, which is, is a good thing, because I don't know if you've seen pictures of how that works or watched a YouTube video. If you touch that saw, it actually will just stop immediately. And, and we have this same saw in our main shop, and we actually had a student that that happened to. And so instead of having to deal with an entire hand cutoff two years ago, we dealt with not even breaking skin. So it's an amazing tool. So I was very happy to see we have that.
Stop one of them, how that went?
Yes. Yeah, so if you haven't seen it, look at a YouTube video for, for stop saw. It is amazing technology.
It really is.
I thought I could try my own fingers, but it did happen in classroom. And it, it did, you know, um, it stopped, didn't even hardly cut the skin. Alright, this is looking at our greenhouse. I can't wait for these tables to be filled with plants. And so what a beautiful, beautiful greenhouse this is. And I invite all members of the board to come on up and take a look at this and walk through our facilities. Uh, we're very excited about, about how this is just going to really help our ag program, just to even go to that next level. Well, if we keep walking around, we can come to our stadium. And, and this is sort of a bird's eye panoramic view of the entire stadium. And our track, which is brand new. And, and, uh, if you've ever run on a, an old track and then walked on it, one of these rubberized tracks, it is a huge difference. You can, you know it from the first step. Wonderful, great new facility there. We're very excited about that. When you come in, this is our concession stand. And then our press box, um, is brand new. And then the ticket booth, and it's created an entire athletic, sort of football stadium feel. Not at all congested, not at all closed in like the last one, where you could barely get behind the stands in the concession. Much more room, much nicer, beautiful, beautiful changes to our stadium. Now, from the stadium, if you look, this is going to be where the new gym is. Uh, and, and again, it's the backside of, of the existing, you know, what we call the mini gym. And then the new whole gym complex here. And so when you walk in, you'll walk into like this little tunnel area. We'll have concessions on the left. You'll be able to get the main gym from there. And, and, uh, this is what the gym will look like, the mini gym will look like. A bleacher seating three hundred students. Um, great facility for JV games, uh, practices. You know, we won't be trying, trying to figure out where our basketball teams are going to practice going off campus. Now everybody gets to practice there. Wrestling matches, great new facility, as they're working through that. Well, then you can go from there into our existing gym, which got a brand new coat of paint. Um, one of the students actually came up to me last week and asked me if, uh, if we repainted the Warrior. And, and we didn't, but what they did is they painted around it and they touched it up and it just made it just pop out. Plus, we added all new lights in there, to the point where you almost need sunglasses if you go into our gym now. Unbelievable the difference, um, in, in how much brighter it is in there. And so, uh, you know, we're real excited about that. Very nice. Alright, new bleachers with the W O on there.
It's a fluorescent.
Great addition. You go into our auditorium. And so much has happened in that auditorium. That auditorium is a beautiful facility, always was a beautiful facility. Something I was really excited about. We use it every single day. Well, now it's had a complete facelift, brand new seats that you don't have to sit kind of cockeyed on. You don't even get a hold of it on it, you know? Uh, much, much nicer curtains, carpet, paint, the whole thing. And so this is kind of a better view looking out there. So if you haven't been there, great facility there. So, that's, that's some of the, um, new facilities that we have. And we have staff that is very happy. You can see how excited they are right there. Like, very beginning of the day. But with all the construction, everything going on, this is more how they normally react. Normally, like this was at, uh, Halloween. And so we decided this year to be the minions, and I'm group, with all the minions. And it was a lot of fun, tremendous school spirit. You know, everybody is, uh, I think, really enjoying and looking forward to the additions and, and kind of moving on. And so, say all that, but really, the thing that's the most important is getting back to what we're really all about. And that is, um, helping our students to be successful. And so our vision of looking forward to the future, preparing them for when they leave us to be successful, young adults. And then our mission on how we're doing that, we call it E3, where we educate, engage, and empower in an area of mutual respect and trust. It's what we believe very strongly and we'll work hard every day to achieve. And, and in order to do that, the first thing that, uh, I call it the four Rs, that we try to establish with our students. And it's interesting that, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time. And the lady that came in and did our, our opening end service this year, that one of the most important things she said, in, in determining if a student's successful is the relationships that they build with their teachers and adults in the building. And so, you know, our first thing is to establish positive relationships, focus on relevancy, increase the level of rigor to prepare them, uh, increase student responsibility, so they take responsibility for their actions, their learning, their education. And then, in all areas, academics and extracurricular. So I guess the question is, you know, how are we doing so far? Athletically, you know, we, we sent for the first time ever, um, our golf team competed at the state level. We have tennis player competing at the state level. We had our cross country that did very well. The one brother, last year we had a state champion. His brother this year, um, was fourth in the state, but he broke the school record and his brother's record. And so we are looking forward to some great things out of him. We've got two more years, and, and I think that he's just going to get faster and faster. And already, he's running at a pace faster than his brother who was a state champion. And then our band for the fourth consecutive year went to the state, um, state competition level. So, very proud of them. We had a really neat day where we were able, the day before they went to this, um, we had a pep rally where all the students got to come down and watch their performance. And, and it was just a neat, a neat thing, uh, to be able to do that. Academically, we're working very hard, and I think our kids are doing well. And, and one of the things that we try to focus on all the time is what comes next. And so during October, um, which is college application month, every one of our seniors applied to at least one college. Several, several of them applied to many. And then they Snapchat it out, using some of the technology of, you know, of where they applied. And so they sent that out to everybody, and then we put their little things up on a bulletin board and see all, of all the different colleges that they applied to. And, you know, that, this is last year, and we're expecting to, to beat this. For last year, sixty-eight percent of our kids went on to college with scholarship money. And so one of the things that we try to do and always keep our eye on, the prize, and, and this is the prize, to send our students out prepared, educated, ready to take on the future, ready to succeed, ready to thrive, and, and to enjoy the fruits of, uh, a quality education, a well-rounded education. That's what we're doing. West Oak, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any questions, buddy? Next, we have, um, a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the November thirteen work session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda for the work session of November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, unanimous. Public comment, and we'll sign it up. And, alright, then, um, moving on, we have exhibit one, approval of minutes for the October nine work session and the October sixteenth regular board meeting minutes. We could get a motion to approve those?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the October ninth work session, uh, minutes, and one to sixteenth as well?
Yeah.
As well as October sixteenth, a regular board meeting minutes.
Sir? I have a motion in a second. Anybody see anything that needed addressing? Any of them all in favor? Also, it's unanimous. And Dr. Thorslund?
Thank you. I wanted to share with you our ACT scores. And we did, uh, put out a press release about that recently, so that is news that's out there now. But, uh, we were above the state mean on that ACT scores, which is back where we want to be. It's still not quite as high above the mean that, as we want to be. But we were, uh, above that. The composite score for the SDOC was seventeen point nine, whereas the state score was seventeen point seven. Uh, again, we want to get that. We want to be in the eighteens, approach the nineties and twenties before long. But, uh, we are, um, always excited when we, when we, our students outperform the counterparts across the state. We were not below the state in any area, which is good. I think last year we were. And this year, there were two in math and in science, we were at the state mean. But our English reading and writing scores all exceeded the mean. And that combined, the composite score was above the state mean too. So, uh, moving in the right direction. And, uh, that's, you know, our latest, our latest, um, academic measure that we've had released. Uh, the other thing I wanted to share with you was last Friday, well, Thursday and Friday, we had Veterans Day programs across our school district. And I had one of our, um, state legislators, actually. Uh, I was in a meeting with him on Friday, and he just mentioned it was odd that we were in school. But I, I just told him that Veterans Day is, or, or at least the observance of Veterans Day is one of the best things we do in our schools. It's an opportunity for our kids to say thank you. And Gloria's going to show some pictures that different people. Ernestine went four places on Friday, four different ceremonies. I saw one Thursday, one Friday. We also, um, had many students involved in the, the moving Vietnam Memorial that was out at Blue Ridge. But just a great day for our kids to say thank you. And I'm convinced that if we had Veterans Day off of school, kids wouldn't think about Veterans Day. But when they're in school, every one of our schools does something to help kids understand what Veterans Day is all about. And I saw my brother over the weekend, who's a teacher at West Oak, and he just, just voluntarily, he was just talking about what happened at West Oak, I guess, on Friday. And he just said that no matter what the assembly is in a high school, not too many high school kids take it seriously, except Veterans Day. He said, "There's something different about the Veterans Day assembly." He said, "Every year, the kids are just perfect." And they show respect, they show honor. And I was at Seneca Middle Friday morning, and I saw the entire student body stand for probably a ten-minute standing ovation as veterans walk through the doors one by one to come take their seats. And it, it was a long time period. And the kids just stood there the whole time clapping. And you could just see those veterans thinking, "It's pretty neat." And, and it's good for the kids, so, um, I was, just wanted to share my pride in our students and schools. And I will be an advocate for never having a holiday on Veterans Day, because it's, it's an opportunity for us to really teach kids about patriotism and, and service above self and all those things that we want to, want to teach them.
I was over at Blue Ridge Friday morning for the Vietnam Memorial. I couldn't believe the elementary students, the interest they took.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, you know, you wouldn't think that as long ago as it was, many elementary students. But, uh, they really took an interest in the program.
It's a great opportunity for our students. And, and I think the veterans who came to our different programs and assemblies would tell you they felt honored too. So it's, it's certainly a, a good thing all the way around. We're, all of us are, are very proud of our schools and students and administrators for everything they put on. Uh, it's a great, it's just a great day for, uh, public education, so. Just wanted to share that. Happy report.
The one, middle school is always, at Seneca Middle, with the high school comes in.
Yes.
Excellent, probably. Get a lot of good comments on that.
It truly is. They're, they're very, um, unique assemblies and programs in our schools for that day. It's just a good thing.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Alright, Mr. Ambie?
Alright, well, you, uh, all have had an opportunity to review the October, uh, financial report and information. And, um, we are here for any questions, comments, concerns that, uh, you might have. Do you want to tell them about that? Just tell them?
Yeah, um, on the revenue page, the very first page?
There's nothing.
What? Yeah. I could see it out on the line.
Slide it over.
There you go.
I want to look at your monitor.
Line forty-two.
Yep. On line forty-two, um, this is the payment for the one percent of the two percent retirement, um, increase that came from PIBA. So we got a credit on our quarterly report. And so that six hundred and seventy-six dollars is what that represents. That's it.
And that's one percent?
That's one percent.
So that is a forerunner of what we can expect over the next four or five years?
Well, you know, it's a, the, they're going to recommend a two percent increase in salary too, so that would be, it would go up a little bit. No, depending upon what budget to stay.
But that's the smallest number we're facing over the next.
That's the one, and we still have a one that we're paying.
That we're paying, but each year we get another one packed on. So that's six seventy-eight would be something we have to plan on absorbing in our budget each year.
Not one they're giving, it's one that they're compounding.
So we get one next year at six seventy-eight, then the next year, we've got that six seventy-eight plus another one. Then the next year, the two plus the third, so it's going to be a challenge.
We have an increased total of what, four or?
We go to twenty-one percent.
What have we been paying?
It's, uh, one percent every year after this for five years.
Five years, yeah.
For five years, but what's the final percent? Percent that that gets us to, twenty?
Twenty-three.
Really?
Twenty-three percent.
For sure, and it's, and the state, uh, the employers is capped at nine.
Well, you're looking at six hundred and, what, seventy-six thousand for the, for the one percent. By the time we get to the end of this, you're talking over three million dollars. There's a curse to four.
Yeah. Challenge. And, and at my meetings I was at last week, um, the question came up, "Are y'all going to help with that?" when they were talking about planning the budget. And there was just a blank stare, uh, given by the representative. I don't think she was in a position to, to, to say, say one way or the other, but the guy said, "I take that as a no." Um, but she, she didn't say one way or the other, but I...
And then I read where the, the retirement fund is, is making record gains from their investments.
It's got to, because it was way behind.
I mean, in the billions of dollars, and if that continues, you know, maybe they could ease off a little bit on that.
We can hope.
I don't know, we'll have, you know, catch up, but...
Right.
Don't expect them to ever ease up.
No.
Yeah.
Well, they don't, they don't fund us now at what they say they're going to use.
But, um, we seem to be moving along. Hopefully, uh, you know, come December and that, the money will start trickling in from across the street and other places. So we'll have, have some cash flow. Um, so we, we're looking forward to that, uh, starting very soon. Any other questions about the, the budget or the October?
The general fund cash account, that one further down?
Yes.
There's a, the Chinese Culture and Education Center, is that a company? Is that where we get our Chinese instructors? Okay.
It's the group that, yeah, that helps provide those. And we pay, we pay a small price and they pay the rest of it for, for them to come in.
Okay. And how about the, uh, under the, the next line down, it talks about the Clemson University. Was that the all cohort? What is that? That's a thirty thousand dollars?
We, we have a group of teachers that are in like cohort, and we pay Clemson, and then the teachers pay us five, so it's just...
It's a class?
Yes.
It's a, yes. It's classes.
We're, we're going to... We're, we're getting out of that business. It, it's just difficult to do that, to, essentially Clemson, Clemson is asking us to be the broker for them, so that they can
Have these classes.
Give it at a discounted price or something. But, we just, because not all of the students are even Okonkwo County's employees. Some of the students in this cohort are part of other school districts, but they still, it's just...
But they still pay us.
They pay us. Uh, we're not losing money on it, but it, I feel like we're doing accounting that Clemson University should be doing, to be perfectly honest. If, if somebody doesn't pay, then Shannon's contacting them and reminding them to pay and...
She'd take a bat.
We, we haven't hired the hitman yet to go collect money. But, but the bottom line is, I feel like Clemson should be doing this, not the school district.
They do rotate it to other districts. They all say, "Well, Piggins County's going to host the payment fee this time."
But it seems to me they could also figure out a way just to reduce tuition for their students and collecting themselves. That's just me thinking.
Any other questions?
Anything else? That's it?
Okay, um, uh, we, when we talked about the, the staggered start and dismissal, we said that we would get some information, and it's, it's taken a little while to, to get that. Of course, you go through the, the first nine weeks. Uh, and I'll be the first to say there were kinks to work out at the beginning and bugs to work out. But, uh, Ozzy Wright and his three area supervisors and Lisa Harbin at the bus office have done a, a, a really nice job of working together to get things going. So, um, what you, um, all have is the information in a, just a quick little, uh, table where, um, I took the information I shared with you last year and then what Ozzy was able to give me this year. Uh, total bus routes, uh, two hundred and sixty-three in sixteen seventeen. We've updated to three hundred and twelve, um, at, at this time. Average ride time, and, and I just put them in an Excel sheet and let it spit it out.
I think that's actually route time, total route time.
Route time, yes.
Yes, that's, that's my fault for...
No, I, I put that in there wrong. So that's, that's route time, uh, on average. And then, so, uh, we've taken fifteen minutes off the average route, and we've gone from, uh, thirty-nine students who were on the bus more than an hour and a half, down to ten. And, um, we continue to work on that, but that's just the outliers that are so, so far out. Or, um, a, a couple of them will be special needs as well, so that's just, um, the numbers we've seen. I also asked the, uh, middle and high school principals to, to give me an idea about numbers as far as coming in early, I think Kirk started there. Um, you know, because one of the questions we had was about opening up early. And, um, it, it's interesting. Seneca High, uh, Cliff said that, uh, you know, they started their, um, grant program and extended that to the morning as well as the afternoon. Uh, but he says that they don't have, um, that many, he didn't give me a specific number. Well, Holla Middle, um, and West Oak Middle said about fifty, uh, coming in. Now, Wahaah High has the, the most. And he said that on most days, by eight o'clock, when they officially open with the buses coming in and that, uh, they are close to two hundred kids. They have them down at the cafeteria area. Uh, Kirk counted ninety-two. He actually did an actual count the day. But they, they all have them in there doing different activities or working on things and supervised. And nobody said that it was overwhelming or, or too much of a, of an issue to...
Are you getting any complaints from families still?
We haven't gotten, gotten a whole lot. What we've seen is, we've seen that elementary kids are getting dropped off closer to eight o'clock. People are just, we've seen a few more tardies at elementary level, because they're, they're dropping them off right at the, the tardy bell and then going on straight to the middle school and our high school. Um, we've gotten a lot of positives about the traffic, uh, being better at, uh, the, the middle schools and, and that with the, the start. Um, we talked a little bit to our, um, parent advisory group. Uh, nobody expressed...
Matter of fact, I was expecting...
Yeah, we were sort of waiting to be hit by...
Kind of to wear a bulletproof vest at that meeting when we brought this up. But it was overwhelmingly positive at the first parent advisory meeting. I mean, there was one comment that was negative, but it was a parent who was anticipating next year's schedule because they had a kid going from elementary to middle or something. None of the people complained about their kids actually in, you know, again, at that one meeting. I'm sure there's some people out there who it's inconveniencing.
And we had talked to some people who were excited about the bus, and they said their kids got off the bus quicker and weren't on the bus as long. Now, we've had some logistic things with, uh, you know, the, the biggest one, quite honestly, is the, uh, Tomasi Salem Elementary buses going and running part of their routes and then getting down to, to Wahaah High. So what we do is we have, um, a, some of the, the kids that maybe would ride a bus up to Tomasi Salem, they, they ride, um, a bus over from the middle school and then get off that bus and get on. So maybe a bu, a bus that serves Tomasi Elementary doesn't go to Wahaah Middle and pick up. It meets them at Wahaah High and just gets their students there. We do the same thing with a couple of buses in the West Oak area. So like, if you drive the Career Center bus and you go straight to West Oak High School, well, your kids who, uh, are in the middle school ride a different bus and come over there, and they just get off that bus and walk on to, to your bus. So we have situations like that, but we had those situations before. You know, so, I, I think it, you know, what we'll probably do is continue to talk to the, the different groups. Um, we talked to the teacher group. The students were, the high school group, advisory group was very overwhelmingly positive. I mean, that, those, those kids were, I mean, that, they didn't say anything. Uh, even the ones taking the early bird classes, I mean, that, it was, it was positive. But we'll continue to talk to, to the groups. We'll share this information, uh, with them and, and continue to, to monitor the routes and that. It, you know, for full disclosure, uh, one of the, it's not, I guess, negative's not the right word, but one of the, uh, things that happens because of it is field trips to elementary school may have to wait a little bit longer to leave and have to be back a little bit, a little bit quicker than they like to. You know, those teachers want that field trip to take, be the whole day if you're going to take them out to the zoo and whatever. You don't want to bring them back and still have thirty minutes to, to have them in, in the room most of the time. Um, but because of getting on routes and things, uh, we, um, have to make sure that you don't schedule to leave before eight forty-five or nine and you get back by two, or you load up the leave by two to come back. Um, athletics, we haven't seen major issues yet. Some people don't get to leave as early as they want to, but we told them to get their coaches trained. And we offer classes, uh, you know, so. And more and more of them are, uh, getting their coaches trained. If they want to leave at three forty-five when the bell rings, you need to have a, we have activity buttons. You need to have a coach there that can, can drive you, his team or her team to the, to the game or to the match. Spring, it'll be a little more hectic, because, you know, a lot more sports going on and you have a rain out and things get going. But, um, again, I commend, uh, Mr. Wright and Mr. Robinson and, and, uh, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Smith and that, for doing all they're doing with the, uh, routes and making it, uh, go as smoothly as possible, so.
Bet, uh, you know, we've increased the number of routes. And we talked earlier about bus drivers running double routes and stuff. Bet, uh, you know, we've increased the number of routes and we talked earlier about bus drivers running double routes and stuff. How has that affected our number of drivers, total employees, has, have we increased or were we able to decrease?
No, we, we're right about the same, actually, we're still looking for about eight or so, uh, so our, our, our people are dri- our.
Cause we thought that would help.
Yeah, it, it didn't make a whole lot of change i- in the, the actual number. Um, we, uh, what it did do is it gave most of their time to them through driving a bus, there's very little non-bus time now. Uh, we, I think we had six, I think countywide that are doing non-bus time, is the number.
Whereas last year that number was probably fifty.
Yeah, it was, it was very high.
So, so the drivers are now doing what we hired them to do instead of having to find additional things, because we've always given them, guaranteed them six hours a day because that would offer benefits and that's really the, the main recruiting tool for a bus driver is the fact that you're gonna get benefits. So, um, we've always guaranteed them six hours a day if they wanted it, but now they're getting the six hours actually behind the wheel instead of doing four behind the wheel and two in a cafeteria somewhere or something like that.
Steve, with the increase in the number of routes, did this increase the cost any, I mean?
Well, uh, for the state.
We, yeah, I saw something the other day that said they were allocating an additional seven thousand five hundred gallons of gas per month in Oconee.
But I thought when we were discussing this earlier, the state said, and I, maybe it was just because of the number of buses we got to have or the number of buses they would have to provide, I knew it was that, uh, that this is the way we should go.
They did.
But they're willing to, to pay more for gas.
It's cheaper than buying buses for them, I mean, it's cheaper than buying buses.
Over the long haul?
Well, now, that, that, there's a big, there's a big request and, um, you know, um, Superintendent Spearman, she's gonna ask for a, uh, a, a lot of money to purchase some buses and, and that part, um, to get these buses from pre-ninety-five that have been having some of the issues off the roads, we, I think Ozzy said we got seven new ones that we traded out, uh, this time, but I mean, if you a- allocated out, uh, you know, a, a bus is a hundred thousand plus dollars.
I was thinking from an economical standpoint, if all the districts across the state are doing what we're doing here and they're increasing that number of routes, if they're increasing that much gasoline on a daily basis, at some point, the cost of gasoline is gonna override the cost of the, the buses that, that would take.
Just a point, I.
Yeah, no, we, we, that struck our attention when Ozzy showed, showed us that.
That's a lot of gas.
It is, a lot of fuel.
And I think that was.
That was, that was for the month of October compared to last year.
That much difference.
Difference.
So, I mean, it was, it wasn't seventy-five hundred gallons, it was seventy-five hundred more than last October, that's a lot.
It's a lot of gas, it is.
If we would have a hundred percent of our bus drivers running, would we have more, uh, routes that we could double up?
We would, I mean, we, we're, we're doubling up some routes now, but I, I, I think I get you.
So would that three twelve change to three twenty or three thirty if we were full of staff?
Well, I think it would change, um, some, yes, uh, now, I'd have to ask you exactly how many, because we've got, while we've got eight openings, we've got three area supervisors that drive at times, we've also got some sub-drivers that won't be permitted to drive, so I, it's not gonna go up sixteen or, or that, it, it would be minimal, I would, I would say four to five routes.
So obviously there's still a big need for bus drivers.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've, with the salary bumped up and that, I mean, you know, we've, we met, we meet with the bus advisory group too, so, I mean, we meet with them, we met with them last, uh, month and they, you know, we met with them and gave out the perfect attendance awards, uh, half of them got, over half of them got perfect attendance for the first nine weeks, so I mean.
That's been one of the more positive things you've allowed us to do is reward perfect attendance for bus drivers because they.
But it's a tough job.
Well, they should probably be our strong recruiters too for their contacts and their neighbors, friends, family.
But there's so much you gotta do upfront, you know, be- between the, the, you know, you gotta, you gotta go to class for a week, you gotta pass a test, you gotta pay for the test, you gotta, you know, we try to help with the physical and that kind of thing, but there, there's just so much they gotta do upfront and then you get a job and you gotta wait potentially, uh, uh, you know, a month before you get paid. Um, so it's, it's, it's a tough, but we're not the only ones, I mean, we, I've talked to, and Ozzy's talked to A- Anderson Five, his wife works in Anderson Five and they, they're, they're running double, Greenville is, is way short, I was at, at my meetings this past week and I talked to, to several people who are in positions like mine and it's, it's a problem across the state, it's not a, an Oconee County problem. And then when you start doubling up those routes, that's when those ride times go back to being longer and schedules get changed up and people get, start getting upset. But I do think that so far, based on what we've had and how we've got going, um, and that's just the, the transportation side of it, I think there are a lot of positives from the a- instructional academic side of it too that we, you know, are, are not gonna talk about at this time. Okay?
You have other questions?
Okay. Thank you. And then, boy, I don't even, I don't even wanna go into this discussion. But the, but the calendar, it's time for us to look at a calendar for, um, the next school year, we, we get calls starting as soon as school starts, but, um, you know, we keep hoping that the state will, uh, cut us some slack and let us start before the third Monday, but, uh, they keep telling us, don't plan on it, it's not gonna happen. Um, so, um, you know, what, what we have is, uh, one option here and, and we're going to take it to the teacher forum, to the parent advisory and to our different groups. Um, but if you notice when the email went out with the, um, notes and the agenda items, there was a different one and there's, so I've got three potential ones. Uh, but when we talked and, and looked at it, we, um, talked about this one being, um, the option we bring to, today. There's a couple of things about it, you know, we figure there's some non-negotiables, uh, one of the non-negotiables that we typically talk about is three days at Thanksgiving. Another non-negotiable that we typically talk about is two weeks at Christmas, uh, and we didn't get that this, you know, past time, we were a, a day or two short of that. And then a full spring break, um, a full week of spring break, well, when Deb and I, before Deb left, uh, we started working on, looking at the calendar early. Um, that first edition didn't have a, a, a full spring break, it didn't have two weeks at Christmas and, um, so we went back to the drawing board. We go through advanced ed next year, um, we're up, it's hard to believe, but it's been five years. Uh, so we go through that process again, uh, next year where y- you know, you guys score the perfect, perfect score for us to help our, bring our average up, but, um, it's a different process this time, so they've changed it, it seems to be, um, like it's gonna be a little, uh, more school and district friendly. But we looked at trying to front-load more of the, uh, staff development days to help prepare for advanced ed and to help with, uh, doing some summer institute type stuff at this time where we can have all our new employees there, we, we can look at tying in some of the orientation and different things and, and get them, uh, paid for, for being here and doing that. And we put, um, seven days at the front of the calendar because another one that we try not to, to do is go into that first full week of June. And with every other option I have, uh, we will have school after graduation, um, which is already scheduled at, for, um, June the first. You know, you can put the makeup days after, you lose instructional days before testing. Um, you can put the, the last three days, uh, two half-days and a full day there and then the teachers work, so they're through the first full week of June, they're working almost a full week. Um, you know, we felt like this would give us time to do some, uh, district professional development, some advanced ed stuff and still have time to do school level things and one of the things they always complain about is working in their rooms and getting ready and, and giving them time to do that. Now, some people aren't gonna like coming home, coming back on a Thursday the week before.
They don't end up with all working in the room though, I think it could be crucial that.
Oh, no. No, 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 we already talked about the days.
Our idea is to move, our, our idea is to move summer institute to the week of the sixth through the tenth.
Okay.
So then two of the summer institute days would be under contract and we would only, there would only be the stipend needed for the three days prior to that. For, and those days would be optional, but on those topics where we need all of our staff members to be trained, we would plan those for the ninth and tenth, so those will be staff development.
So like one of them would be, one of them would be advanced ed, now one of them would be whatever junior instruction, you know, we need to do, it could be Collins, it could be whatever, but one of them we, we would hope would be advanced ed at the school level to set up your teams and talk about the process and go through, through that and get it prepared. Um, because we're requesting days af- we're requesting a visit after Christmas, um, we gave them three dates, they said they would let us know, um, in January, what, what we chose. We looked for that right after that date in, in February where we have that in-service day where we could tidy up things and, and make sure we were, um, good to go before they, they came in. But to have a three-day Thanksgiving, a two-week Christmas and a week of spring break, um, you look, if I move those in-service days, then that means we're just gonna be tacking on days at the end or taking them out somewhere else. Um, so, you know, when we looked at it and we talked about it a little bit and, and, uh, Dr. Thorson asked me to, you know, make a recommendation and like I said, I've got, if anybody wants to see them, I've got the o- other potential options, uh, I brought copies, but, um, in this unique situation, the twentieth being, you know, the third Monday being so late in the month and then us going through advanced ed, I, I just think, uh, and combining summer institute and that, I just think it's a, a, a win-win for us as far as, uh, getting everything we need to get done before school and then still finishing, um, with that June first and if we have to, if we don't use that makeup day, it'll be just like this year, you know, the teachers will finish on that, that Friday, um, May thirty-first, so.
Five of those ten days have to be professional development days, I mean, legislation requires that. So it does seem wise to be doing professional development at the beginning of the year, so we benefit from that all the time.
I agree with that, I don't know.
And the other thing that, that's really important when you're thinking about June is we do need to get summer school in and, and when we try to work with our students, you know, they're good about coming if we get them here through June, but once the Fourth of July holiday comes around, then it's hard to get them back again, so that's the other really important thing with the, the June.
With the rate of success.
Yeah, the time.
It allows us to front-load the summer school so that we're getting it in June when students are more likely to be here and we just, we wanna, we're kinda excited about experimenting with the summer institute being the week before, cause when students go home that last day, teachers are ready to go home too.
Are you getting a lot of resistance, I don't know.
No, we, we, we haven't brought out and, um.
We did talk to principals, we, last Wednesday and principals seemed to.
And they, they were positive, I wouldn't hear what they were.
Like this idea, so we'll, we'll take it to teacher forum, parent advisory.
And I think that's what you're.
And we just wanna get it out in front of you guys, so in case you hear about it after that, but we're not gonna ask you to, obviously, till we come back in December to.
I think the people that are involved in it more than us will be making the decision and the recommendation, I mean, we can pass one, but it doesn't affect us. We wanna be sure it's what's best for the employees and families.
We want it out there and we'll get Greg to help us with that, but we wanna get it out and then we'll collect that over the next month and have a recommendation for you.
And we'll share, you know, I, I, when we go to teacher forums, I'll, I'll share with them what the, the others look like, it's just, again, with the state control like it is, it's hard to make a pretty, pretty picture.
There's not much.
You lock down a lot of it.
You are.
Not much in the way.
It'll get gradually better when that, when that first, uh, third Monday is the fifteenth of August, we'll be in pretty good shape. You know, but until we work our way back to that, it's what it is. That's it from us.
Okay, any questions? Um, okay, Ms. Hopkins.
Well, it looks like we have an awful lot of policies, but there really are three clumps of policies that we can handle, I think, that way. The first one, I H A Q is, um, career transition to work education and the, probably the most important thing to call out here is, is that career specialists must be certified by classroom instruction. Um, so you're familiar with career specialists, uh, they get their CDS or their G C D Fs, um, and they support our students in their career development in middle school and high school. And, uh, this has just been clear that they do have to be certified teachers. Um, we did, and we're proposing to remove the language about the ratio of guidance personnel, uh, in schools, not that we don't endeavor to do that, but for the last two years, the state has given us flexibility, uh, because of lack of funding and so we're not required to do that and because we're not required to, it seems prudent to remove that from the policy. And then the other, um, piece of language in here has to do with offering the parent conferences and of course, we can offer conferences, but we cannot require parents to come to conferences, so it's just cleaning up that language to acknowledge that we, we do offer conferences, we'll meet, we want our teachers to meet with parents regularly and frequently, but we're not going to try to require parents to come, that's their call.
But we will still continue strong effort.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, and I T P meetings and all of that sort of.
No, no, no.
And there'll be like documentation to ref- reflect that we have offered?
Sure.
Okay.
Any questions on that one? Then the next grouping, uh, is I H B A and I H B A E and this one, this grouping does have to do with some new, uh, legislation as well as some new guidance. And it does have to do, uh, the first part that you're seeing here is just changing from children to students, uh, trying to appreciate that what we're talking about are often older students and they don't like to be referred to as children, um, a little bit of language around disability that's more, um, politically correct in there. But the important area is this area around educational rights of adult students and this has to do with when a, when a special education student turns eighteen, they have the rights of an adult, just like any other student, they, they, um, certainly need to be, uh, owning their own educational decisions, however, there are circumstances and this is what this is calling out, when the student either may, uh, not, uh, feel comfortable managing their own decisions and can authorize somebody else to act on their behalf or through, and it's the third bullet, um, I believe in here, they, a student can be determined to not be capable of operating as an adult at eighteen years of age. And then there's a process that not, that needs to be instituted, with that, there's also a form, what would happen is, uh, perhaps a medical entity or some other entity would make that determination that the student's not capable of functioning, they would notify us and then the second document here is the form that we would be using to notify the student about that, now there is a repeat, an appeal process and those kinds of things that, that we would need to go to. This is all legislated, there is really no room for discussion about.
Normally though, it's, it's a parent, if child is eighteen and, and is not capable or something, but does it have to be? Do they have, do we have any obligation there, once they turn eighteen, that it's to the parent or?
Well, that's part of what this process is, is going through understanding, making sure everybody's clear that the student now is the adult and does have that authority to make their own decisions and, and.
But if they can't make that decision, I don't know about choosing somebody.
Well, that's why in some cases somebody may be assigned to them, if you read through this, uh, that's part of the process, it could be somebody assigned. Or if the student is eighteen and, and doesn't themselves feel ready, they can say, I still want my parent to be authorized to make this decision.
Sometimes, parents can.
In all likelihood, this person's gonna be the parent, the, um, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it's gonna be the parent serving in this role. Because we're talking about students that might be in the F Troop or T Warrior class at West Oak or, you know, students that aren't able to function in society at that point, so it, in.
In a lot of ways, it mimics a power of attorney kind of a situation, uh, you know, that we deal with in other aspects of life, it's very similar to that kind of a process.
Yeah, cause it talks about the other rights by the South Carolina Progate Court, so the court gets involved.
Right, right. They can be, and, and that's where it can become quite a legal process. Uh, we do have a lot of work that we need to do to educate our folks about this and help implement that and that's part of what we'll be doing. Also, if you read through this, it will require, uh, a letter at times from principals, what we, uh, what we've done is drafted a template that the principal can use for that process, but that's not part of the forms here, this is the required form in here.
Do, do our attorneys look at, at something like this?
These things come from.
They come from the, the School Boards Association has legal advice before they send this out to the school districts.
And that's, this is where this.
This is, um, typically, I feel like when something is already in legislation, we don't need that policy that restates it, but because this is so new and it's so different from what we've been doing, I felt like it really is probably worth us having a policy that documents what is already legislated. I, I felt like you needed the visibility, I guess, and what this is all about, it, it will be a little bit of a big deal for folks to implement. And then the third grouping has to do with our homeless students. Um, and what you're gonna see here is the, a little bit of change because if you recall, we also had a new policy about our foster students, our students that are in foster situations. And so what we've done here is removed some language about the foster placement, uh, because that's been handled now in a different policy. Uh, a lot of this is not changing. Or if you can scroll down a little bit more, there's, there is some further language here though. Uh, but this one, I think, is also important. Again, we, we do this, but to have it documented that, that for above applies to students homeless situation, that we're not going to disclose the, the status of students is, we're good about not doing that anyway, but, but having that recorded here. So that is the policy. Um, there, there are times, uh, when there's a question about whether or not a family is homeless or a student is homeless, and we're trying to, um, tighten that up a little bit. So the additional documents here do deal with when there's a dispute, how that process will be resolved. So we've got the regulation on that. And then, uh, the third document has to do with the written notification of the final decision in that process. We have, just informationally, uh, Ms. Evie Hughes had been handling that, but because, uh, Michelle Grant, uh, really deals with the funds that handle the homeless situation and she's been dealing with the foster situation, um, yesterday, for instance, she dealt with, with DSS with five foster children that we have to look at transportation. We've been quite busy in implementing the new foster rules. It seemed, um, uh, expedient to have Ms. Grant also handle the, the homeless situation. So she, that's where that is now residing in our, in our department. Questions on, go ahead, Ms. Ruca.
Uh, the first bullet. Okay, it, it talks about, uh, students who are sharing a house, housing of other persons due to loss of housing, economic hardship. And it goes into, is living in a motel, hotel, trailer park or camping ground? I was just, you know, we have trailer parks.
And that's part of.
I think that means mobile home.
Mobile home.
Not, not a typical trailer park where they're.
An RV.
Yeah.
So. But I did, I am aware last year that we had a family living at South Cove in a tent.
Tent, yeah.
But there is still, to your point, there are still things that we have to look at. A student who's.
The verbiage.
We have, uh.
What I was concerned.
There are times in that situation where a student, um, is in a, in any of those situations, but they're not there for a crisis reason. They may have voluntarily left their home.
I agree, I have to agree with Joe, that, that the terminology there, trailer park, we, we might need to look at that. I mean, there's a lot of trailer parks that, that are good trailer parks. Somebody might be a little bit offended if they read that. You're, you're telling them.
It may have just been the way I was reading it Sunday afternoon and, and.
I wouldn't take trailer parks as a campground.
Yeah, I don't think it is. I think it's a trailer park. It's the way I read that.
We may need to check on that.
How do you read?
We'll check on that.
And, and more important, and, and I never really thought about this, but, you know, here, uh, let's say you have, uh, a child in high school and, uh, and only has a mother and the mother's in jail. I, I think we, I read something about DSS. How quickly does a school, or how, how do we help this child whose parent is now in jail? And that is the only parent this child has in our school system? What do we do for these kids?
But those kids actually wind up under the foster policy now. That's the, and so DSS immediately steps in, they immediately notify us. That's the part of the situation. We had five students that I spoke to on, on Monday that was.
Because I've heard, you know, stories how true they are, like, I don't know, but where kids will just go home with a, a friend.
Right.
And, and I'm thinking, you know, we gotta do more than that.
Yeah.
But wouldn't guardian ad litem come into play there?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't guardian ad litem come into play there?
Right. And, and so when DSS is involved, we get immediate notification, we know what's going on and they fall into the foster roles. And those, as you know, those have now been, um, elevated and are, are sketched out more. The, the more difficult thing to deal with are these homeless students who don't have a situation like that. That's part of the official process and we are trying to find that. I think the language concern in the first bullet, you know, if you read the entire bullet, what they're trying to do is be all-inclusive because it is talking about from the beginning, student who is sharing a housing of other persons. So it could be in a, in a house, in a trailer park, which we would think of as a mobile home park, or campgrounds or any of these other kinds. It's, so the, the listing is any situation from a, from a single-family dwelling to, um, you know, being abandoned and not having any, you know, living in, in a cardboard box. And they're trying, I think, to list the gamut. If, if there's better language.
But there's sometimes we don't know about it either. They don't share it.
We do work hard with the staff to, to pay attention to the student.
The school doesn't share it. I mean, the families don't share it or.
Right.
Mama's gone to jail and the kid doesn't tell anybody and they're old enough to take care of themselves.
And it sounds to me like we are not gonna hear about the jail portion or the, you know, the fact that the ch- the parents are in, uh, some kind of hospital for overdose. Until DSS gets involved.
DSS.
I mean, we're still, we got a whole level of DSS that we have to deal with to.
But we also have our SROs too, and, and they, we, they oftentimes find out what the schools know so that there's a, uh.
I just feel like, you know, if there's any possible way our current staffing that we have can be more cognizant of those, those children's positions.
Hughes worked closely with DSS and had them on speed dial. And they.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not worried too much about the jargon of the trailer park, but I just, it just jumped out at me when I read it.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on now. We have a lot of things that, be surprised that people that come in and visit and the situations our kids are in.
But if a parent is sentenced to jail, they obviously went through the court system.
Right.
And then that, the court system is gonna notify DSS if there are minors that that person's responsible for.
And they immediately contact the school?
They would, yes.
I mean, by law, that's their process.
That foster, that foster regulation, legislation that we, that is now in place, requires that immediate contact with us. Um, historically, perhaps that might not be the case, but they have, since that legislation is in place, they've been very, very good about making sure that we're on top of that. Now, whether or not, you know, if it's a situation that's not in our area, um, and again, if DSS is involved in South Carolina, we still need to be, we get notified from those DSS. But if it's an out-of-state, Mr. Ruca, that would be the one place that I would be more concerned about it.
Right, but I'm. From what I read, I knew I had to, we had to go through the DSS.
Well, and I will tell you that we've, we've got very good relations, I think, with the authorities. And we've, right now, things seem to be going well. And by the way, we do have our, our third mental health council.
Oh, yes.
Oh, it, it mentioned that there was a term, uh, district liaison. Is that Evie?
Uh, that would be Ms. Grant now.
That's Michelle Grant now.
As I was saying, it's had shifted. She is also the, the foster liaison.
But it's, Michelle's name's on the dotted line. Evie certainly is part of that team. They work together.
Right, but I just, there was a, there was a phrase that kept you saying, uh, district liaison. So I just didn't know who that was when I walked down the hall. Okay.
So I think that pretty much covers it, Mr. Man.
Any questions? And, and now is that grouping, the JFAB?
Right, those are just the, the process.
Those three together. Process, alright. What about exhibit twelve, thirteen?
Uh, those are second reading and those are just a minor change of background. We talked about that in a couple of meetings, the background issue, so we can talk about those as you.
When we go to the action item.
It was a very minor change.
Okay.
Just cleaning up some language.
Alright. Ms. Williams?
Okay, um, my report is just a quick update, um, to just kinda let you know some of the professional development, um, sessions we were doing for administrators, um, but also for teachers, um, who are maybe interested in, um, becoming an administrator or just for knowledge if they wanted to attend one of these sessions. Um, just so you know about the topic, topics that we're doing this year. Back in September, we did the, the yearly Title IX training, which is required of all of our Title, Title IX coordinators from each school. And then also other administrators and, uh, teachers are, attend that meeting. We usually have our biggest turnout for that one because of the, the requirements. Um, so that was a, a very good session. We were also able to utilize our, um, Safe Schools training resources that we purchased, uh, last spring. And this session actually, um, gave a, a, a video that the, the staff was able to watch and then they had a follow-up quiz, um, just so that we could go over the information and make sure that the, um, Title IX coordinators and administrators who attended were very much aware of how to address and handle sexual harassment, issues with students and how to respond to that. Last month in October, uh, Evie did the same, uh, different training using the Safe Schools video, but this was on bullying, um, some topics that have come up about bullying, recognizing and how to respond. And during these training sessions, we also review policies and procedures so that, um, the, the employees who work in, in this, uh, particular area that are handling this situation, they, they remember how to respond and, and act according to the policy. Um, actually, starting tomorrow, you'll see that there's another topic outlined. Dr. Lucas will be doing that session and he's already sent them out some early reading and homework assignments that they're gonna be doing with that one. And then, uh, January, we'll come back and, um, just touch on the resources. We, we, as you know, we have a lot of technology tools in the classroom. So looking at technology resources, um, Jennifer and Corey will, uh, conduct those sessions just to talk about how they can continue to use technology effectively in the classroom and, and, um, what are some new things that we're using now. But this is just an overall update on what training we've provided. This is something we started in twenty-ten, so it's been about seven years and we still get, um, a lot of folks to come out and attend these sessions. They get renewal credit as well, but also just some good information that they need to know regarding things that happen in the school and just, um, things that can help them to be successful in their roles. We also have a version of, um, support staff training also that we're doing. In fact, this afternoon, Dr. Lucas did, is doing a session with the support staff or has done, uh, session with the support staff. Um, usually they're held here in the boardroom, but of course, our board meeting tonight, he did this session at Blue Ridge Elementary this afternoon. So, um, just for information, let you know what we're doing to help support our administrators and teachers with professional development.
Is this a, a, awesome to the people, maybe a cohort, the people who want to be an administrator?
Yes, it, yeah, and that's really how it started, is probably by grow our own, um, giving them an inside look at some of the things that administrators have to deal with and just.
Gives us a look at them too.
Right, right, right.
To see how serious they are.
And then they give us input on some, you know, what are some topics or sessions that you would like to, for us to, to have as well. Normally, um, we've done these in the past with the leadership team. We all present it, but we open it up, uh, on availability of the topics that folks wanted to, us to share. So that's how we, we've kinda changed a little bit. Dr. Thorson has done several. Ginger has done some, Steve and Gloria have done several, um, finances and building and, and all of that. So we've, we've all shared, but we've reached out to other avenues to have folks to share as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? We'll move to action items then. Uh, first one is, uh, board meeting dates. Do you have that on? You don't have it on, but we said, um.
Yeah, it's the same. We just followed this sk- this year, this calendar year schedule and matched them up.
But we have to do and remember from January.
Yeah, it used to be for the, for the school year, but now it's for the calendar year, so.
Yes, calendar year instead of a school year. So if we can get a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen board meeting dates.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the two thousand eighteen board meeting dates be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, comment? Are none, all in favor? Is unanimous? And, um, you said we can do the next two together, you think?
I think it's the career transition one would, I would recommend.
Two separate.
And then the two special education ones.
Okay, alright. Policy, IHAQ, career transition to work education. Uh, first reading, if we could get a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we approve policy IHAQ, career transition to work education, in first reading.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Questions? None here? All in favor? Is unanimous. And then, policy IHBA, special education programs, first reading. And policy IHBA dash E, delegation of rights to make educational decisions. These two on first reading together.
Mr. Chairman.
You'll go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve policy IHBA, special education programs, and policy IHBA dash E, delegation of rights to make education decisions on first reading.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll take a second.
We got a second, alright. Any other questions coming? Are none, all in favor on first reading? Thank you. And, um, and then the next three. The JFAD, ABD dash R, admission of homeless students. Uh, JFABD dash E one, dispute resolution procedures. And JFABD dash E two, written notification of enrollment decision on first reading.
That's mine. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve policy JFABD dash R, administration of homeless students, first reading. Policy JFABDE dash one, dispute resolution procedures, first reading. And policy JFABDE dash two, written notification of enrollment decision, uh, first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on all three. Any comments, questions? Are none, all in favor? All say unanimous. And then exhibit twelve is where it was a while ago, policy JH dash R, student absence and excuses. This is second reading.
And this was just the change from criminal, uh, sled check to crim-.
No, this is the, where we had to add the proficiency base.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just wrong on that.
The uniform grading policy changes, so.
Add the paragraph.
It's, it includes what we've already approved as far as our proficiency-based application and aligns us with the new uniform grading policy with the state. It's the language around that.
That's.
So it, so it says that essentially that students don't have to be in class during any days for a seat time for those approved courses.
Okay, so that's different from the K policies. We've already finished.
We'll do the K ones, yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Do we have a motion to approve JH dash R, student absence excuses on second reading?
Mr. Chairman, I move policy JH dash R, students, absen- student absences and excuses be approved on second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other questions? Are none and all in favor, is unanimous. And then we can do thirteen and fourteen.
Right.
Together as KLJ, KLGA, school resource officers, and KLG, relations with law enforcement authorities, um, which we rescind on second reading.
Right, we're gonna rescind, uh, KLG and we're gonna get more, uh, specific and, um, more detailed guidance with KLGA. This is, um, again, based on what, uh, Ms. Hughes in her discussion with law enforcement wants us to, to, to change and recommend.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion that we rescind on second reading, policy KLG, relations with law enforcement authorities, and that we approve on second reading, policy KLGA, school resource officers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Are none, all in favor? All say unanimous. Um, and then we're back to Ms. Williams. Needs an executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations and changes. We need a motion.
I make a motion to go into executive session for employment recommendations and changes.
Second.
Second, all in favor, unanimous. Bye, Greg.